We're going to call the Saint Clair County Board of Commissioners. The Order for Standing and Plaguing.
Plaguing the Institute of the Flag of the United States of America and as the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Hyden.
Here.
Mr. Rushen.
Here.
Chairman Tannen.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Greatham. Commissioner Riley. Chairman Ball.
Here.
Uh, addition to Lisa's changes to the agenda. Some none will be approved. Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
For five minutes previous meetings, August 20th and September 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the August 20th, 2015 Commission meeting and the September 3rd, 2015 Standing Committee meeting be approved and filed.
Second, discussion on any of them at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item six, we've got a proclamation, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll give it to you.
I move that we support and approve the proclamation for Healthy Minds and Healthy Bodies Day.
Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we leave that item, I believe I'm scheduled to be the person to deliver that to the.
Oh, I.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, I've got it right there for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 7A through 7I on the consent agenda.
Support, discussion on anything on consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number eight, the report sustaining special committee, the most retired commissioner McConnell.
No.
Howard.
I have nothing this evening.
Howard.
I'd just like to report on the walking Trussell Bridge from Avoca on Labor Day. If you haven't had an opportunity to do that, I strongly urge you to do it. It's a great walk, beautiful scene, and a real asset the county has there.
Uh, Dave?
I have nothing this evening.
I'm going to take a pass to it. Item number nine, citizens wishing to address the board, or there are citizens who wish to address the board at this time. Saying none, we're going to move to unfinished business, no unfinished business. Uh, item number 11, what we're going to do, you're going to see us get through a lot of these things quick. What happens in our structure, we have a committee meeting, which we actually discuss all these items previously, and then we send these items onto the board, so they can talk about the folks, but it seems like we're going through this stuff very quickly because it's been in front of us before. I'm going to do an introduction, Greg, I'm going to let you introduce the supervisor, and I know we have some of the township folks here in attendance this evening.
Thanks. Steve Hopflech, Township Supervisor, also a county employee, works for the Road Commission in the Cape Pen Garage.
Mr. Chairman, you want to introduce us up?
We've got our trustee, Eric Taylor, Eric Taylor Green, April Deserac, trustee, and Annette, how are you doing?
Thanks for having us. I've got to tell you, this is a new hall, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, item number eight, approval of county disbursements, 2015.
This time, I'd like to move to approve county disbursements for August 2015 in the amount of $23,066,338.77.
Support, discussion on any of them, disbursements, roll call? Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item B, the Resolution 15-20 for the Saint Clair County 13th levy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission adopt Resolution 1520 imposing the 2015 property tax levy for all those local governments that levy a millage at that time.
I'll second that.
Discussion on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, the 2016 Community Corrections Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Community Correction Grant Agreement in the amount of $288,042 for a term of October 1st, 15 through September 30th, 2016.
Support, discussion on that at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, the R-Stat Agreement with the Catholic Charities of Southeast Michigan.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the Residential Cognitive Substance Abuse Treatment Agreement with Catholic Charities of Southeast Michigan in the amount of $192,777 for a term of 10/1/15 through 9/30/2016.
A second ten?
Discussion on that at all? Roll call? Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item E, the 2016 Day Reporting Supervision Agreement with Huron House.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the Day Reporting Supervision Agreement with Huron House in the amount of $25,000 for a term of 10/1/15 through 9/30/2016.
Support, discussion?
Just to comment, they have their open house on Friday, so if you have an opportunity, you might want to go by. They've been serving the community 11 o'clock.
11 till 3:00.
11:30 at 5:00.
Till 5:00. I encourage you to drop down.
Any other comments at all on that? Roll call? Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item F, the Commission on Aging Supplemental Fund Appropriation Recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Commission on Aging Supplemental Fund Appropriation Recommendation.
Support.
I'd just like to point out, as the Chair of Human Services, that the county commission appoints a commission on aging to administer the aging millage.
Senior millage.
Senior millage across the county.
We're getting there.
I'm getting there. This is my first year in that role, but, and what we're doing this evening is they are submitting a supplemental appropriation where they have some extra funds that they want to distribute to different groups. A large portion of it's going to the Council on Aging, but there are other groups that provide legal services and other aging services that are included in the appropriation.
Okay, anything else on that? Roll call? Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item G, the National Grant Request for Health Department Manning Table Revision.
This time, I'd like to move to accept the National Grant funding in the amount of $53,754 and approve the request for Health Department Manning Table Revision, adding a temporary full-time National Corps of Year position.
Second, discussion on this at all?
I'd just make a note that this is, uh, no national funds required for this grant.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G, the Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Grant Funding and Health Department Manning Table Revision Request.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Grant Funding in the amount of $246,977.76 and to approve Health Department Manning Table Revision, adding one full-time health education position.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item I, the Saint Clair County Community Mental Healthcare Integration.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement with the Saint Clair County Community Mental Health for the healthcare integration project in the amount of $19,332.23.
Support, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J, the Animal Control Software Analysis.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the acquisition of Shelter Patrol Animal Control Software in the amount of $10,450.
Support, discussion on this at all? Roll call? Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item L, Blue Water Riverwalk Wetland Contract Change Order.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, the 2016 Secondary Road Grant Application.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2016 Secondary Road Patrol Grant Application in the amount of $151,497.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Now, item L, Blue Water Riverwalk Wetland Contract Change Order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Blue Water Riverwalk Contract Change Order in the amount of $29,887.
Second? Just like to comment, if you get an opportunity to go down and visit the Riverwalk, our new
county park area is way down at the south end of that, and we have been approved for a Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant to acquire another 2.3 acres of county park that will be at the end of the Riverwalk. And so if you get an opportunity, again, it's another one of our county parks that you can.
Is it just going to be south of the existing?
Uh, the acquired property will be north of the Wetlands.
Okay, north of the river.
Yeah, north. South of it, you go up that, under the new bridge, and then on up to 10th Street, that's a beautiful walk too in itself.
Uh, any other discussion on this at all? Roll call? Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item M, the Landfill Gas System Expansion Contract Recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the landfill gas expansion and award the contract to Tulaski Excavating in the amount of $124,494.
Support, discussion? Roll call? Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item N, Resolution 15-19, the pledge of full faith and credit for the last grant of any of those.
This time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 15-19, the pledge of full faith and credit for the Lester Daniel Credit District Funds.
Support. Any discussion on this at all? Roll call? Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushen.
Yes.
Chairman Ball.
Yes.
Item O, Manning Table Adjustment Request for Prosecuting Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve the prosecuting attorney's request to revise their Manning Table to increase the, to increase the witness coordinator position from a part-time to a full-time position.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, the Veterans Affairs Manning Table Revision Request.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request for revision to the Veterans Affairs Manning Table, increasing the health educator position from part-time to full-time.
Support, discussion?
Just a comment on, I think they're doing a fantastic job, and I think this is a reflection of the increased demand for service that we need to have, bring that up to full-time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item 12, the reporting report.
The, I've got a number I'd like to cover. You received, the commissioner mentioned the demo earlier this month regarding the 800 megahertz communication system and radio operators replacement and the state credits that we receive for everyone that uses those radios connected to the system. If you have any questions regarding that, I would urge you to contact you with Jenny Posey or Tim Conver. Tim is the Director of Central Dispatch Department. We're continuing to monitor an issue with the access charges. Our credits expire, the first set expires in 2017, the second set will expire in 2020, and then everyone that connects to the system will be, will have to pay something to the state of Michigan. To connect exactly what they'll have to pay, how they will bill is unknown at the present time. Tim is watching that carefully through his professional organization. There are ideas that are being kicked around in the lanes, run by his organization, hopefully over the next 12 months, to show an idea of what's going to happen with those fees and what the charges may be now to the county but to the local communities who use the radio system as well.
Yes, I'm going to chime in a little bit on that. Can't believe that 10 years ago I was there. When they built the system at the time, there was enough credits for a 10-year period on all those radios. We're coming to the 10-year period and had some replacements. Myself and Tom Riley had a lunch with Mort World, had to, you know, talk to him about, you know, what's going on with bike lanes, about radio replacements, those types of things. We have a CDA meeting on October 7th, and we're going to start those discussions with, because the biggest thing that, like anything, is the funding for these cities, that the cities are going to have to, you know, pay money eventually to budget accordingly, so if it's a year or two on a lease, put these guys on. No, it's because, to be quite frank, a lot of these city managers, a lot of respected communities, they weren't there that 10 years ago at the time, so maybe, you know, be able to spend a little time in the months, you know, with issues, so.
Well, it's good news back then, 10 years ago, we were getting all kinds of grants because of the homeland security issue to pay for those things. Unfortunately, those grants aren't available now.
Correct. That's all regular municipalities, once they have contracts shared amongst the cities. Do you have an estimated cost?
Well, it's, it's a, what kind of radio system we replace it with. Right now, the estimate that we have for replacing all the existing radios that, looking back up, the issue with the radios is that for the next five years, 90, about 95% of the radios that exist within Saint Clair County that purchase the one with us, in five years, Mort World will no longer be providing parts or servicing those radios. So the issue will be is all of those radios are going to have to be replaced at some point when they break down. Certainly not all at once, but as they break down, and we're all used to cannibalizing about this piece to make this piece happen, and once that disappears, they're going to have to start replacing radios. If we replace everything that was out there, we're talking 1286 radios.
That's all, that's everybody.
And it is estimated between 4.5 and 5 million dollars, close to more than.
Just for the regular discussion, what's the cost for the county sheriff department? If the net salary is covered in your own cost?
Well, 332 of those radios are owned by the county.
About what would the cost?
So, yes, we're looking at, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 dollars per radio. And here's the funny part, seeing how they're going to charge us, state Michigan is going to charge them, the user.
Good, good try then, Mr. Chair. Just a little history on this, Jeff and I worked on the board back then, we were operating with about 50 different frequency, radio frequencies, and when we moved all of those frequencies, 800 megahertz, everyone needed the radios, so consequently, everyone had new radios back then, but they don't last forever. 10 years is, you know, about life expectancy, unfortunately, because everyone, not at the same time, they're all dying at the same time, so.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot of grand opportunities too that come along with radios, if you remember, we did a part of that, and it's really taking a look, go to staff credit for being on top of it, you know, if it's, this is an 18-month old issue, spend the next six months getting the plan together on this, putting the different departments on it, you know, I know this should have these issues between river dories, explaining the pressure from Facebook, and then they'll have that, you know, that timeframe to be able to go off and figure out a couple of different brands and push them to different places, so. The number's big, but I'd be surprised if a lot of that doesn't, you know, doesn't cover the true current.
Next item, earlier this week, the county's act authority provided a report to the pension board, as well as the broader board, mission number two there, on the health of the county's pension fund, as well as the healthcare, post-retirement healthcare. Those of you that weren't there, I'll just give you real quick numbers, for maybe those of you that were here that might chime in as well. If you remember, our healthcare fund, back in 2011, was only funded to 16% of its total liability. Currently, at the end of 2014, it has been reduced to 30%, so that's a very significant change. A lot of that is due to the program changes, the medical changes that were voided and placed back in 2012. The pension fund in 2012 was 81% funded, it's been reported that at the end of 2014, we were at 89% funded, so we're in very good shape, our pension fund, and pensions that were there.
I guess it wouldn't be surprising for those of you that weren't in attendance that there are many employees that are unhappy about the fact that, or at least there were a few employees that appeared at me, are unhappy about the fact that the hospitalization fund is not in the same financial position as the retirement fund. In the past, we worked the employees to increase the funding on one hand, and also to better manage the benefits, to improve the system's viability as far as it has outlined, but it is, you know, a tough issue, and one of the things that I told them to talk to me about it is, this isn't something that's unique to Saint Clair County, it's not something that's unique to local government, or state government, or national government, or even some of the biggest corporations in our country. Retirement healthcare, bankrupted General Motors, bankrupted Chrysler, bankrupted the city of Detroit, and it's a very difficult issue that everybody's had a significant problem with, and I just hope that we can continue to work with our employees to continue the benefit, because if left alone, the benefit would sunset somewhere in the range of what was a bill.
A 1% growth gives you 11 years, 7.5% gives you 16, so it's still, it's still, it's still on a slippery slope, but hence, you know, five years ago, pre-becoming Board Chair, I said to the next word, reportedly says you have five to seven years left, and you had to adopt. So we made some changes at that time, two years to this, it's increased. I just want to turn back the clock a little bit too, because when you look at '08, you know, the '08 recession, we lost 28% of our total, you know, total debt. I mean, at that time, we were at roughly just a pension piece of $229,000, so we lost 28% of that. If we look at where we're at today, we're still running back to that level. And I ran some numbers, because I've been in a mitigability period, which was going to be part of our discussion next week, because just to take, if the quote-unquote recession didn't happen and we had 5% growth, we would have been 100% funded in our pension piece of 50% healthcare. That's how significant of a, you know, slide that was. When people say it's coming back, you know, came back, but it's, we're still not at that level that we were at in '08, so we don't even believe that.
And what a lot of people don't understand is that the way the portfolio works is we lost 20% of our valuation, even if we run up 20% the next year, the law only allows it to go up, is it?
5%.
5% for the rate of inflation, so if our rate of inflation is 2% or 3%.
It's 2% or 3%.
So you're looking at, it'll take us 10 years before we get back to where we were in 2008, and it's great for our property taxpayers, but for our services is a real challenge.
And that's true not just for counties, but townships and cities too.
Any, any, in state Michigan. We're in some better shape than you actually, that's the act word, we're in better shape than the most, you know.
Well, 89% on our pension fund, yeah. Look, we need to emphasize, I think, that back, almost 8 to 10 years ago, when the federal government mandated that we had a separate pension fund from the benefit fund, about 10 years ago. We are required to fund the pension part. If we promise we're going to get a pension check, we have to provide that. The benefit part isn't something we really have to provide at a given state level, we can change that, and we have over the last few years in order to increase the longevity. I think the most significant change we made was with the Egglet program, and we were able to provide even better health services, I think, for our retirees over 65, and we were able to shave, as one said, 1.6 million a lifetime, about that, you know, about 10 million, so. That's been a challenge.
It's going to be an issue that we're going to have to understand, address again and go through the process.
Absolutely.
We did it last time, we had 13 meetings, we invited the employee groups, it was a formal change, and all they loved it, wasn't going to stack back, and these 13 separate two-along meetings that, you know, we went through.
And then a few also, with the retirees too, and their payment too.
I think it's important to emphasize also that the bottom line of this report was, we exceeded our goal. My recollection of that bill is our goal is 7.5% actuarial gain, and we were.
We were, we were.
I was thinking of something like 8.5% or something like that, so, so the news in terms of our management and investment results was positive, we made progress, but clearly with a, with a 11 to 16-year life on the whole benefit, it's not, we're not making any progress to.
But that's just the benefit portion, that's not the pension portion.
Right.
The pension portion, the pension's in fantastic shape.
Is there any statute that says you have to have a certain percentage? I mean, there is.
You could do the page about your, the, 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 the.
Okay.
We're trying, we don't have any of this one, I'm just trying to go over it.
But, but one of the things that you'll face, you know, we have reported that in our letter, and if you're not making substantial progress, with some of the new standards, the state can come and say, we want to talk to you about a recent adjustment.
Right. Yeah, and it may affect our bond rating, and we've had two increases in our bond rating.
In the last, I'd say, probably five years.
So.
And that increase in bond rating is good.
Oh, very good, because that means your interest, because you have to pay on your bonds, it goes down, and we, we rebonded the jail. What should we save on that?
This is the administration one.
We did, we did both.
Separate.
Yeah, what do you recall here, what we saved on the jail?
1.2 million.
1.2 million, and that was spread over the life of the bond. And then the county building, the administration building, we've got about, what, seven years on that yet?
Yeah, I think that one was about 1.6.
I think that one was about a half million.
I mean, so, having a bond rating, I think it's something we really need to focus on to keep that bond rating.
And we talked about this healthcare thing too, here in China, because I'm always the guy that just go off from retiring, and you know, the partial public pension. And we, a lot of questions come up about open county, because they took a bond to cover their liability, and Compton County just recently bonded for their liability. We met Bill, myself, Carl, Kerry, a couple others, went down, Bill Burko, we actually went and met with Compton County to see what they were doing. Can I just explain a little bit about their situation? Much different.
Sure. Um, the Compton County ran their numbers, they looked at, they were more repaid as you go, system, or their retirement benefits. And the amount they were paying out each year was actually more than what they estimated the amount payment was going to be. When we ran the numbers for our situation, our estimate of bond payment was actually double what we paid, who we paid as paid as you go. So it would take quite a few years for that portion of the benefit to us. Yeah, so...
So just sort of, essentially, they took a bond, which made them a hundred percent funded, but that bond payment is less than what they were actually paying out, which we're in a different situation, which it would increase our two-fold, we're at four-and-a-half million a year, and that, we would have to pay nine million a year. So, for Compton, it was a no-brainer.
They had just closed their plan in January of one to sixteen. Our plan has been closed for quite a few years, so they can bond for a longer period of time. We've only bonded for fifteen years, because that's exactly what the compensation schedule is.
Compton County did not do the road permission, just the general employees.
Well, the scary part is though, is what happens if you bond at a hundred percent, and you put all that money in your portfolio, and you have another two thousand a year. You lose twenty-eight percent of your portfolio, you still have a full bond payment, and now you're twenty-eight percent less funded. That's going to create interest.
No, it's, it's great when, when...
Right.
Seven percent growth, right?
It's no good when, yeah, if, if you can borrow at three and earn seven percent, it's a good deal.
Hey, look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's okay. Yesterday, I received notice that the director of the Michigan Department of the Corporation is submitting his budget to the governor for two thousand sixteen, goes into effect at the end of this month. Very significant reductions in funding for the department, as well as other programs, as well as a significant reduction in the staffing levels. It hasn't been adapted yet, but I think we can expect that we will feel impacts here. There's certainly going to be less incentive funds available for projects, and we lose incentive funding for a lot of the programs that we have in place to try and encourage people to invest in the county. A few dollars that will be left will become extremely competitive. Staff will certainly be limited in their availability to meet with us, to do site visits, to meet with the elders, to just raise storms, so that's going to be a little bit more difficult and more a challenge for us. We're certainly going to have to be more than advocate ourselves on projects, especially the projects that we want to encourage the legislators for, and we can see the fund. That means that the role of the lobby is going to become more important for us. And many of the leads that the community can see is companies that are looking at locating somewhere in southwest or southeast Michigan, and they may not look at St. Clair County. A lot of those leads come to the N D C. With the reduction in stamping and reduction in program, it's entirely possible that we may see fewer inquiries or connections between our economic development agencies and those potential developers. So we'll be watching this, I'm sure we'll be talking about it internally, within the organization, and the E D A will know this one. So we'll kick it.
Where's our next legislative meeting with our, our state federal legislators? Because I think that's something we need to bring up to them and tell them, you know, this is...
I think it might be in November. We had our last one on August seventeen, which is every couple months. We can certainly add that to the...
Yeah, I'm sure they have that.
So, I just wanted to tell you about a meeting that I had earlier this week with the court administrators, with county clerk, with the H R department, the finance department, just to talk about what's going on in the new courthouse. And there are some very innovative programs that they are considering that will certainly improve service delivery to all of our residents. I was floored by the creativity of the group, how thorough they were in looking at all of the potential pitfalls, the hurdles, and all the nuances of some of their proposals. So there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. I'm certainly going to do everything I can to encourage them to continue moving forward, and I think the board commissioners should be very proud of the folks that they have representing them in the courthouse, as well as the elected officials that work over there that are so dedicated to serve them with so very few resources.
It's very encouraging. Mr. Chair, didn't the chief justice of the state Supreme Court recognize St. Clair County and Judge Kelly and courts for their management stuff?
Yes, yes, they have. There's some information they're putting together, filing in the state, and we'll hear a little bit more about that, assuming in the next couple of months.
For best practices?
Yeah, best practices.
Exactly. That, that's excellent.
Well, there's plenty of things about that we all favor prosecuting attorney, that's been the president for the entire state, we all prosecute attorneys.
So, a good group over there. Just a quick update on the Columbus, many of the technical issues that we've encountered over the last couple of months have been ironed out. The last we heard, I've heard, all of the participating police departments currently have access to Columbus in their offices, and several of those departments also have their mobile connections up and running at the present time. There are some necessary support system upgrades that are needed to software, foundational software in the sheriff's department. Those upgrades are in the process, and once they are completed, then they will be able to have full desktop usage to the sheriff's department, and then they'll be able to do the mobile connections shortly afterward. The two thousand and sixteen budget, our finance director is grabbing at the process, and the board can expect to receive the proposed balanced budget at their full board meeting in October. If you have any specific questions about the budget, or we're going to stay in the process, I would you contact Kerry Hutton at your convenience. The Blue Wire Convention Center is nearing completion for construction. We just have a little bit of work to do on a lot of the roads, some site ready work that needs to be done, and once that's completed, all of the construction is done. We did, but that means that the operational and maintenance work immediately begins. We did receive a grant from the D N R and from D T E to support some landscaping, primarily trees, that will be placed around the facility. There's a little bit of grant received earlier in the year from D T E, some plantings, but this is much more significant. We hope that we can see some of the landscaping work done this fall, the majority of it though will be completed next spring. This month's financial statement will be the last monthly report that you see on the construction phase of the convention center. The next financial report that you receive on construction will be the final report, the closeout report for the convention center construction. Just a quick update on bookings, we've got some very solid numbers booked, we've already signed contracts and committed for both next spring and summer, we have tentative bookings for the fall, and in the winter, and even to two thousand and seventeen. We've got a four-day event that is contracted for March, mid-April, through the end of the month. We've got continuous bookings back-to-back, and those again, signed contracts. In May of next year, the first, third, and the fourth weeks of the month, we have events planned. They are tentatively, pardon, they are firmly booked, they're contracted. The second week, we've got a tentative booking that will take up the majority of that time there. So those two months are pretty much worked solid at the convention center right now. June, we have three multi-room events that are under contract for next year. And we do have, as I mentioned, a multi-day event that is tentatively booked for September of two thousand and seventeen. Things are filling up quicker, bookings are going much faster than we expected, and certainly more than what we expected for the, from the consultants that were sharing information with us before we got started. If you recall, the budget for the convention center construction is nine million dollars. We are presently under that number, and even though we still have a little bit of work to do, we are very confident that we will still come in at the target number for the project and maybe a little bit of this work. So, we'll share all of that detail with you when we finally close the project out to the next, probably thirty to forty-five days.
Is that, is it for the convention center? Just a comment or two. You know, we're talking about these conventions coming in, and when they book for two or three or four days, we have to think of the economic impact of that, and the statistics indicate that the typical participant in a convention that spends the evening, or the day, and the night, will spend about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And so, you know, if they're going to spend four days, they're going to draw over a thousand dollars from their community, you know, on a four-day convention. If they come in just for a day convention, they typically spend about a hundred. So it's, it's a huge economic impact to the, to the community to have these conventions come in. And obviously, I think, once people come here and see the camp, they have to say, I'm community family pack. Anyway, that's good news. I look on my schedule, I believe our next legislative session is on November ninth at noon.
Same guy, I think I forgot.
No, this is, this, this is our, our session with our legislators that we talked about. I think it's November ninth.
Can you ask the bill question? You have a motion to...
I would so vote.
Court, on favor?
Aye. Miss Ling is business. I have one quick item that I'm going to be bringing forward for the board next month. Just got this board member appointments on various boards and commissions, just this particular sheet that I have, there's thirty-five different committee assignments that commissioners have to cover. Doesn't include all the other outside meetings and so forth. And we actually really have never taken a look at this, so Chris and Jenny knows, guys that worked on it. There's particular ones that are statutory, there are certain ones by resolution, number of understanding agreements, some of them you have to attend by bylaws and policy, some of them are liaison only, because some of the, and they're non-voting. So, we're going to take an earlier look at this list than we, than we never have, is which ones do we have to attend, and which ones do we, do we not have to attend? So I'm going to bring more of that information back to the board, just because I think, over the course of time, you just start attending some of these different meetings, so there's a presumed assumption that you have to have coverage, you know, on some of these, and it's just, so this list is just thirty-five, I'm trying to figure out which ones. Most, most of the, many of the counties where they do select those that are mandatory that would be at them, pay a per demon, per demon, for those commissioners that have those assignments in the alderman. So if the commissioner can't, maybe the alderman can, so that all of those things are covered. Right now, I think we've really had a good group of commissioners to cover those. Yeah, what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring this back quick, so I just got my hands on this thing, and going to go over it a little bit more, and we'll put it on the table.
I'm looking at that report, which is very well done. I think it's interesting that, as Jeff was describing, there's some statutory boards for, we, whoever our representative is, actually hasn't told. But most of these commissions, we are already appointing the citizens who are on them, or a significant number of them. And so we do have some oversight that way, and one, one, one way that we might be able to address that is to have a commissioner who's assigned to monitor it. And, you know, if you, if you don't have a vote, and you're really not going to be participating in the business discussions, is it really necessary in those boards and commissions for a commissioner to attend? We've appointed our own representatives, perhaps they could be monitoring the minutes and be available to the chair or the representatives if, if issues should come up.
Lord him would like to say we will have that discussion next month. That's it. Item fourteen, receiving file.
I make the motion, receiving file packets that are sent to the commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Second?
On favor?
Aye. I adjourned that. I move we adjourn.
Court?
On favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel Twelve every Wednesday night at nine P M. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.